Hey, so I will give notice that there was an executive session before this meeting where we discuss personnel and legal issues. I will open the meeting and invite public participation. This is an opportunity to speak for Radnor residents to speak, five minutes allotment, on any topic, any issue that you'd like to speak to, whether it's on the agenda or not. If there is an agenda item that carries a vote, you'll have an opportunity for a public comment at that time as well. But I invite anybody to come speak.
Leslie Flick, 6 Cushman Road, Rosemont, which is in Ward 7. I'm here tonight because I recently learned that residents in the seven apartments located in 827 to 829 Conestoga Road in Garrett Hill have been given 90 days' notice of termination of their current leases. While we love to see improvements and progress in Ward 7, Radnor needs to prioritize creative ways to ensure that the diverse population of Ward 7, including aging, isn't displaced through gentrification. It's unfortunate that longtime older Radnor residents are being ousted from their homes of over 20 years with little hope of remaining within the community that they know and love as developers buy and remodel multifamily dwellings for use by Villanova students. I believe we can work together to find solutions, and I encourage the board to address this issue. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comment at this time? I am not seeing any, so we will move to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda, which is item 2A through P on the agenda? Any public comment on an item on consent? Is there any item on consent that a commissioner would like to pull off to discuss in detail? Can you speak to the mic and repeat yourself?
M, please.
M, as in Mary? Any others? Okay, I will pull M. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, I know that the last meeting or two meetings ago, I remember I asked what the pilot amount was, and if I can just go through that and let everybody know, it would be great for the transparency of the deal. Thank you.
So this is motion to approve payment in lieu of real estate taxes agreement by and between Radnor Township and the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia. Recall at our last meeting, the development for a senior living facility came before us, and part of the agreement is that we will have a pilot, which stands for payment in lieu of taxes. And I will ask Bob or Bill to speak to the details of that, please, or John.
Yeah, well, the details of the agreement stop short of actually calculating the pilot because they're going to be based on the assessed value as determined by the county when they assess during the various stages of construction. What I am going to try to pull up, which may take a moment, is the estimates that were developed when we were talking about this a few months ago. So if it's okay, can I circle back on that?
Well, let me, I can jump in and just explain. So, Sean, until the county does that assessment, we don't know the exact number, but Bill has estimates. What the agreement will do, though, is phase in this over a third the first year, a third the second tax year, and tax years 3 through 15 would be 100%.
So it's a third, a third, a third as they're building it. Is there like a set percentage of, so if the tax every year, say, would be, for the township would be, say, I'm just throwing a round number, a million dollars out, they would give 33% of whatever that assessed value is?
Whatever that is for the township.
Okay, and then does that account for school as well as county?
No.
Just Radnor?
It's just the Radnor tax.
Okay, I didn't know if they're asking. Obviously, we can't approve anything for the school or the county.
Right, they would have to negotiate that separately.
So that would be a separate negotiation?
Right.
That's my question. Thank you.
Does that, Mr. White, does that cover it? Is that good? Okay, so I will, on this item only, 2M, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Okay, and any other item for a commissioner to pull from the consent agenda? Not hearing one. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda in a second. So this is for items A through K, A through L, and N through P. So I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Excellent. So this moves us to the business agenda. Item 3A is a motion authorizing free parking for the Wayne Business Association in downtown Wayne from small business Saturday on November 25, 2023, through the end of the year, December 31, 2023. I will ask for a motion, please.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Jack, do you want to, I see your mic on. Do you want to speak to it, or should I have?
We, I'll just say, we've done this every year. I hope that this isn't going to be a controversial measure. It's tremendously helpful to the businesses that need the additional parking and the additional people as we go into the end-of-the-year holiday season. So I'd be grateful, I know the WBA would be grateful as well, if we could just keep up our tradition of getting people into the heart of the town.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Does this include the South Wayne lot? Do we know?
Yes, it would.
Thanks.
So other than, so it's street parking and municipal paid lots in downtown Wayne in the Commercial District?
Yes, which would include the surface lots at North Wayne, the Bellevue Lot and the South Wayne Lot as well.
Got it. Any other commissioners? Any public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? And Commissioner Faris is off the day. Moving to item B, this is a caucus for preliminary final land development plan for 799 Godfrey Road, which is the Overbrook Golf Club. Hi, Nick.
Evening, Nick Camelia, representing the golf club. Joe Mongalusi is here, the civil engineer on the project, and Jimmy Bart is around somewhere too, the general manager of Overbrook. This is in addition to existing structure. It's the existing main structure right in the middle of the area there. It's located in the center of 131-acre site, I think, as you're well aware, probably one of the largest open space areas in Township. There's very little addition to the impervious coverage. It's located several hundred feet from Godfrey, several hundred feet from pretty much any neighbor. It has no impact on the neighbors at all. It's something that Overbrook has been planning since 2016. Basically, it's a vertical extension of the cart barn and connecting the cart building with the existing building by way of an overhead bridge, and then there's other interior renovations that really aren't part of the land development. The purpose of it is to make accommodations for the existing members. There is no intent to increase membership. Actually, I think there's a really long wait list now at Overbrook to get into the club. Basically, it's modernization to meet the expectations of the members. They received shade tree approval. They have, they're asking for two waivers here. One is a preliminary final waiver, it's a really minor development, and the second is the infrastructure within 500 feet, having the utilities located on the plan. Both of them very common waivers are being requested. Joe, if you want to pull up the plan and perhaps we can lay it out and show it to the board.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Mongalusi. I represent Wilkinson Apex. So what we have here is the existing cart barn, and if you can imagine, we're going to, it's a one-story building with a roof. We're taking the roof off, adding a second story and a third story, which is actually a outdoor deck. We are going to connect it with this bridge here to the existing building, which is this building here. We're also going to be adding an outdoor patio. There's some walkways renovations going on here, little ramp, ADA ramp here, ADA ramp here, and then we're redoing some of the cart paths and walkways around the outside of the building, connecting the porch to the existing cart barn. That's pretty much it in summary. We have an addition to stormwater management out here. It's pretty straightforward, no trees being cut. Like Nick said, a lot of the interior renovations are happening inside the existing clubhouse. We have reviewed the review letters from Township Consultants. Most of them are just design-type of things, drafting items. We're in agreement with all of them, with all the comments in the letters.
So this is, this is only for the carts? This isn't a place where people gather? There's no space for entertainment or anything? It's just a functional building to house the golf carts?
Well, there is renovation going on, where they're moving, I believe, the men's locker room to another location. I think they're renovating, what was the old men's locker room, and make it into the women's locker room, and items of that nature. We calculated the number of seats being disposed of and being added, and I think it actually came out less seats than would currently exist on the site.
And you mean seats in the, in the club restaurant?
Yeah, and there's the piano bar and some of the restaurant areas there.
Other questions from commissioners? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This will move on to item 3C, which is the preliminary final land development plan for 601 County Line Road, which is the Inn at Villanova University Storage Building.
Nick Camelia again for Villanova. This is, as mentioned, the old conference center now called the Inn at Villanova. It's a storage building, it's 30 by 60, one-story. There's no plumbing in the building, there's no offices, it is just being used for storage. It complies with all the zoning regulations. It's located in an area adjacent to the railroad tracks and the Blue Route. We did a calculation, I believe it's like 290 feet to the nearest residential neighbor and 500 feet from County Line Road. Basically, can't be seen from anywhere in the area. They did receive shade tree approval. They have had neighbor discussions on it to advise the neighbors as to what was going on with it. We are requesting three waivers. One is preliminary final, the other one is the 500-feet utilities, and the third is a traffic impact study. This is just a storage facility, so we're asking for a waiver from the requirement to do a traffic impact study. And I think we have a thumb drive if you want to see. Is it on here? Sure.
What's the reason for the waiver?
Because we're not adding any people or any seats, it's just a storage facility to store things that are on-site there at the conference center.
Are you adding plumbing?
The only plumbing, I believe, there's this outdoor spigot, outdoor hose.
Outdoor spigot, is there no bathroom?
No bathroom.
How about sprinkler system?
Does this house vehicles or non?
Like lawn mowers, no-blowing equipment, things of that nature.
But not cars?
Not cars, no, no. It's totally for facilities for the, in itself.
Just sorry, if you do have combustibles in there, such as lawn mowers and stuff like that, should you have a sprinkler system, or it's just you don't need it?
It's not required by code.
Okay, it's not required, okay.
Okay, no problem.
Are you able to bring up the plan? Are you bringing up the plan?
Yeah, I was bringing up the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you. Can I answer a question? Please do.
And this is mostly storing stuff that came out of the building you recently redid that was the old?
The old carriage house.
Carriage house, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, exactly right.
Karen McManus, I'm a project manager at Villanova for this project. So this is just a rendering of the project of the building. So this was, you know, we have met with neighbors, we've been in front of the shade tree, the planning commission, and we're here tonight, Board of Commissioners. So this is an aerial view of the property. This is County Line Road that runs here, Matson Ford runs there, the tracks here, so it's down kind of at the bottom of the hill is where it's being located. This is views as, this one here has become down the drive. Right now, there's a temporary storage trailer there right now that has things in it, which will be taken away with the new building. This is coming in from Matson Ford, and then this is looking up towards the neighbor's property. So you can see it's heavily wooded. This is an overall site plan of the property. Again, this is County Line Road here, Matson Ford, and it's being located down at the bottom of the hill. This is a blow-up of it. So again, the railroad's here. This is the storage building, it's tucked in beside the old tennis courts. This is the main drive that comes down. Across the road is the poolhouse that we plan on demolishing and getting rid of the bocce courts, and that'll just be all graded out. So we're eliminating all that impervious. We do plan a new walkway to the bridge to come up to the Inn. This is a proposed rendering of the building. These are the three waivers, as Nick had mentioned, and that was pretty much it for the presentation.
Could you go back to the last slide?
Waivers? The one before. So the waiver is for, to get preliminary final approval, and then they?
Just so the people at home can see it if they don't have access.
Okay, gotcha.
And is there any, is there going to be any disturbance of the land that's there? Because in your rendering, it looks like it's kind of sitting right where there's already some pavement.
So this is?
Or is that new?
No, that's all existing pavement in the back here. There'll be a new driveway into the building. Like this, this is the main road coming down here, so there'll be access right off that road into this building, and this is all paved currently. So the highlighted shaded area is the only new impervious for a driveway access.
Is the Inn owned by the university, or is it its own organization?
It's owned by the university.
Is it, can you hold private conferences there, or is it just for the university?
No, there's, there's other conferences that go on, that ran out the space at the, there for conferences.
Thank you.
Is it still a functioning hotel as well? Does it have guest rooms?
Yes.
Any other questions from commissioners? Please. Okay, thank you very much for coming out.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So the next item on our agenda is another caucus preliminary land development plan for 150 to 168 East Lancaster Avenue. Is this here again, Nick?
Sure. There, Rob, do you want to pull up the rendering?
There we go.
This is just the rendering that you're looking at. I think you're all familiar with what's going on here. This is the corner of Luella and Lancaster Avenue, across from St. Mary's Church. It's being developed by Berger Development. Berger is a local company, it's been located in Wayne for approximately 50 years. The owner, Dan Berger, is actually a resident of the Township. Previously, we've had numerous neighbor meetings. There was a major concern about preserving the parking on Luella, which has been done in addition to leveling out that area to make it much more accessible for parking and pedestrian crossing. It's existing retail and apartment use. I think you're probably aware, we have in the presentation here what the old building or the current building looks like. Currently, it houses over 10,000 square feet of retail and nine apartments. We're intending to reduce the retail space to less than 10,000. It will house 24 apartments. All the parking for the apartments will be in the basement. So we will comply with the parking requirement as to the number of required parking spaces for the residential use. There is no parking on-site currently. So we're reducing the retail requirement. We are parking all the residential. So we have an existing nonconformity, which obviously we're making much less. We did have to go before the zoning hearing board. We got approval for the parking for some other nonconformities, such as the buffer between our building and the building to the rear. There's no buffer that exists there now. We received some relief from the loading space. There's no loading space there now. We're proposing loading document. And also, we received a variance for five feet on the front yard setback on Luella Avenue. It was unanimously approved by both the planning commission and by the zoning hearing board. We did go to the planning commission for land development. We asked for the waiver for preliminary final and the waiver for 500 feet. The planning commission determined, I believe it was a 5-3 vote, to recommend that this serve as a preliminary plan and not as a preliminary final plan. We have here Matt Johnson of Berger, who'll do a presentation as to what the development is, and also we have Rob Lambert here to discuss the engineering. One point that Rob will discuss is a type of stormwater management for this site. We have proposed two systems, and I think it's going to be up to the Board of Commissioners to determine what system to be used, but we'll leave that up to the engineers to discuss that.
My name is Matt Johnson, Director of Development with Berger Development. We're talking about 150 to 168 Lancaster Ave. It's at the corner of Lancaster and Luella. On the screen, you can see the existing building. It's an existing four-story building where it has a basement level that has a little bit of retail in it, but then primarily serves as storage. The ground floor level is mostly retail. The second floor has nine apartments on it, and then the, or sorry, that would be the third floor has nine apartments on it, and then the fourth floor is currently vacant. This is the side of the building along Luella. If you're familiar, the parking spaces on Luella, they kind of slope down to the building that kind of provides access into the lower-level retail here. Because these parking spaces are sloping down, it's kind of depressing the grade here, which causes the requirement for the stairs in the sidewalk. Our parking spaces along Luella will kind of follow the same grade as Luella, so we'll no longer need the stairs in the sidewalk. Just more images of the existing building. This is our ground floor plan, our proposed ground floor plan. This would be the level that's accessed off Lancaster Ave. Again, we have slightly under 10,000 square feet of retail, and our residential lobby would be accessed off Lancaster Avenue. We're keeping the same number of spaces along Lancaster Ave, and then also keeping the same number of spaces along Luella. Our upper two floors, that's where the apartments would be. We have 12 units per floor for a total of 24 units. 20 of these units are less than 800 square feet. Four of the units are greater than 800 square feet. That 800-square-foot number is what determines the parking count that's required, right? So 24 total units, about 21-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units. The parking level, again, this is the basement level, so if you drive, turn off Lancaster, turn down Luella, go down the hill, and you'll access the parking garage from the alley in between our building and 102 Luella. And again, as Nick said, we're providing 28 spaces, which is the code requirement for the number of apartments and size of apartments that we have, and then we're not providing any additional parking spaces for the retail. Currently, the site has more retail and also does not have on-site parking for the retail, so we're just decreasing the amount of retail and similarly not providing parking for the These are some images of the architecture of the building. The massing of this is a little out of date. This still shows, this shows an earlier scheme where we were intending to remove the parking spaces on Luella. At this point, we're keeping the parking spaces on Luella, so this will be modified a little bit. But generally, red brick, a more traditional-looking building, more generous ceiling heights in the retail to hopefully attract some nice retail tenants there, and then again, two levels of apartments up above, and then just more views of the building. This is the view looking down Luella, and again, you'll kind of turn in the alley between our building and the 102 Luella condo building to access the parking garage. And now, Nick or Rob?
Good evening, Rob Lambert, here on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to jump to the site plan, and I think Nick hit on the big question for you tonight. So again, the location at the corner of Luella and Lancaster. I'll skip over the existing conditions and get right to the proposed question. So with a lot of these projects that cover most of the lot, we have to look at building integrated stormwater, and so that's what we proposed, was actually putting underneath the parking level, putting a vault system in, so all the rainwater would get collected in the vault, and then gets pumped out of the vault and goes out to the collection system. There is really no permeability in the soils. We did perk tests, and so really everything's about rate control. So we proposed a green roof portion and an underground, you know, subsurface stormwater facility. When meeting with staff, staff looked at it and said there might actually be a better solution, but it would actually be in the right-of-way. So underneath the parking spaces, and actually out into the travel lane, there would be an option to actually put a larger stormwater system in that would rely on gravity rather than the pumps, and we'd be able to capture more runoff. So instead of just capturing our building, we may capture some of Lancaster Avenue to be able to collect into the system. So you're actually treating more, more of the storms rather than just collecting our building for a 100-year storm into the vault. We're going to capture more area into a larger system, have more stormwater control, but it would be underneath the Township right-of-way. And so that was the question for the board, is can we build the stormwater system under the right-of-way? We have the building built underground, but we can get a more effective system if we build it out underneath the street.
Do we have questions and comments? We'll start with Anna Marie Jones.
Well, first of all, I want to, I want to thank you for all the changes. I'm really excited that we're keeping the parking. Everything's looking really good. I have two questions. You said that we're decreasing retail, so I'm just curious, it's not a bad thing to do that, especially because we're not filling all our stores lately, but what's it going down to, from what to what?
It's just under 10,000 feet now. So what happened is, is when you add in the lobby space, I'm going to go back. I'm going to go back to one of Matt's plans. So if you look, the footprints of the building are relatively similar. There is some retail on that basement level on Luella that will be eliminated in its entirety. But on the main floor plate, we will lose some area just for the residential lobby, so you can get up to the upstairs. But it's a very similar area. Do you know the existing number?
I think the existing is 10,300 is what I have in my notes. And I believe we're going to 98, 95?
Yeah, we lose about 300 feet.
Then my second question is, with your proposed stormwater vault, are you calling it a vault, so you're just going to capture water? Or is it going to be like a slow mechanism release?
So it'll be, actually, if we put the one under the building, it'll be a vault to hold the water, and then it gets pumped out. And so what we looked at is, the rates have run off to control the rates.
And is that what is showing on this plan?
This one's actually showing the one. I highlighted the ones here just to help. So this would be actually under the building.
So that's versus, so the two options are, one, under the building, and then the other one is the one underneath the sidewalk, underneath the parking of Luella?
Correct.
And can you, once again, explain the difference between the two?
So the one out in the streets is about 30% larger in volume. I know all of you've looked at the South Wayne stormwater system that was put in, so you're aware of, you know, all the different volumes, right? So it's about a 30% bigger. So we actually have more volume to control the stormwater if we build it out there. As you can imagine, building it underneath the building is a little bit more complex. So really, just trying to create an equal trade-off, it was building a system that was bigger out in the street. We could accommodate that.
What is the volume?
I do not have that number off the top of my head. I'll get it for you, though.
For the vault, right, for either, you know?
For either system, I'll get you the number.
How, what's the depth of either?
Off the top of my head, I want to say they were about four feet deep. I will pull up the detail, give me one second.
While you're looking for that, I'm going to ask our township engineer. Just how does this, I'm sure you've had these conversations before you came here tonight?
So in speaking with the applicant commissioner, so two things. For who will be our future residents, not the greatest idea, not a bad idea, but not the greatest to have, you know, the tank under there and then have mechanical means to pump it out. Whenever possible, you would like to have that done by gravity, right? No mechanisms, nothing. As far as the cost of developer, that really isn't our concern. But the fact that, as Mr. Lambert stated, he could make the system 30% bigger in an area, you know, this is tributary to Midland. So even though this is just a tiny, tiny intervention, anything additional is good. And the thought was, if the board sees fit to do this, Mr. Rice will work with Mr. Canelia on an operations, maintenance, and responsibility agreement. So yes, it would be under the township right-of-way, but the township wouldn't have to maintain it. There would be some agreement with the developer that they would be responsible for it and all that. So the fact that we get something a little larger than what would be under the building is a good thing, in my mind.
Are there any other questions or comments?
That was exactly my question. When it comes to, and it's probably more of a John Rice, as well as you, Steve. When it comes to liability, when it comes to if it breaks, when it comes to if there's a new developer, owner switch, you know, if you wind up, so I guess this is going to be like a big co-op, so to speak, right?
It wouldn't be a co-op, Commissioner, it would be theirs to maintain, operate.
So this is going to be one parcel or multiple parcels?
It'll be one parcel.
Okay, so you can't subdivide it, obviously, because then there becomes an issue with the, it's the same thing at Wentworth. You can't have a shared, the house on Wentworth, where they want to have a shared, like, septic system or something?
So you can share stormwater management systems on lots. Our ordinance does allow it. But in this case, so it's going to, Mr. Rice is going to tell you all the good things, but it's going to be attached to the deed. So it's not going anywhere. It will make sure that they are responsible to own, operate, and maintain, and replace, or whatever may occur. And it's attached to the deed. The only contribution the township has is it's under your right-of-way. But that's it.
So it's under our right-of-way? So if the, if there's a slide and the whole thing fills in, or, you know?
We go back to the developer and fix that.
Then it becomes their 100% liable?
Correct.
So they have to get insurance for it and all that other stuff?
We're getting very deep into the details, but I'm just telling you in general, they're going to be responsible for the system.
They're going to be responsible for it, but there are liability issues, there are other issues associated with that. And just to say, yeah, you can use the right-of-way, and if something happens, and I can name three things, but there's probably 300 things that could happen, where it could affect, you know, traffic and walkability and all this stuff, it's going to be on them?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sure it's yes, then it's yes.
Yeah, I've seen Mr. Rice's agreements before. The total indemnification, there's a total indemnification clause to the township in his agreements, and putting all responsibility on the developer.
So you're going to be 100%, you guys are going to be 100% responsible if anything goes wrong with it?
That's what his agreement normally says.
Okay. I'm just, thank you, there's cameras.
I just know what, I know what his agreement says.
That's what I want, thank you.
Sean, yeah, we're going to grant them an easement to go under the township's road. And that easement will have indemnification. I mean, the only question I have about this, these are apartments, right? They're going to be rented. There's no plan to condo this building at some point. So you'd be okay with a prohibition against conduing the building?
Yes, we would.
Okay.
Let's say you start going in there and you start digging, and then you hit a pipe, and then you're responsible, right? You hit a gas line, or a water pipe, or sewer pipe?
It's true on any project.
I'm just, they can sure. Now, or because it is the right-of-way?
I think in any development, if there's a mistake made by the developer and they hit something that's owned by the township, they have the responsibility for that. But I appreciate the clarification on that. Mr. Riley?
Yeah, one more, I guess, comment or question. The, and it is nice that you have space in front, even though it's, you'd have to get through the township to do it. It's a good idea. If you didn't have space, and some places have not had space, and have put a vault down, and have had five sump pumps running to pump it out, like the old middle school did, because its lower gym was below the level of the water table, and it worked for 80 years. So it is a thing. I don't want the board to dismiss there are other options. Maybe this thing shown here is the better option.
Why can't the board just give him the property, and then it's all yours? I mean, it's just, it's our parking?
And I have your numbers. So it was, the, I'll go for the, within the building first, right? So that's the, referred as the vault. Was 5,000 cubic feet of storage in the vault. And that vault's five feet, you know, it's an arch system. It would be five feet deep. And then in the street, it was 8,600 cubic feet with a three-foot-deep system.
The garage, your lowest floor, its surface area is close to like 10,000?
Yes, it'll be a little over that.
So if you went, just say if we went down below and went a foot down, we'd have 10,000? That would cover the whole.
Right, but the way this system works is that we're, let me go back to the plan. Because you have columns and everything else in the basement, we have to design this so it's actually between the column loads. Some of those columns have to go down. So it's not as easy as just saying it's a foot, right? Because then we need structure to support the car load on top of that.
And that's where you're going down.
Right, and so this is more, you know, a pre-cast system that would get installed.
Okay. Mr. Norrisini, is that what we used in front of, or next to the library, South Wayne?
No. So none of our, our systems are all, if you will, passive, meaning they work on gravity, right? And that would be preferred. I'm not saying that that's a bad system. The tipping point for, in my thought, was we get a couple thousand extra cubic feet of storage. Right? That, to me, it's a small, little incremental help to the area. I mean, so that's a good thing.
But I think your, and I'm not sure your question was the pre-cast system. I think your system was a pre-cast system?
So we use the Terror Hill Arch, the Terror Arch system, right? Very robust, strong system to handle the loads, as Mr. Lambert said, yes. So there's a lot of ways to do that. They are somewhat limited because of what Mr. Lambert said, with the parking loads and the columns and the forces they exert.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick questions. You've answered several already. I have gotten several constituent emails about the retail space. There is at least one longstanding business in the space currently. And I assume the new improved retail space will cost more than the current space. But I just wanted to hear if, you know, obviously, the building, if it's coming down, there won't be any retail while it's being built. But I just wanted to hear if you had any plans for who would be moving into that space.
We'd be open to having the current tenants, like, move back into the building. Again, I would understand that it'd be difficult to kind of shut down your business for a year to 18 months, and then to move back in. We haven't had any significant discussions with who the new tenants would be. A lot of that will take place, once we get further along in the timeline, to actually understand when we're going to be able to deliver space.
Sure, I understand. I just wanted to express that this is a concern of the constituents about, that the current tenants are going to have to leave. Next question is, I know there was a lot of talk about the alley behind this building, and that's sort of, I guess, in front of the apartments that are behind it. And some access that they currently have to some emergency equipment that's in that alley. And I just want to be sure that that's preserved. And I know that there was some question as to who would maintain that alley. I just wondered how you worked that out.
Sure, so we're actually, we're talking to the condo association for 102 Luella now, to kind of work through an easement for how the alley would work in the future. Everyone who has access to the alley now will still continue to have access to the alley. Again, like, it needs to be in agreement between the two parties. Ultimately, it's going to be our preference to maintain the alley, just because we're going to have the building. We're going to want to make sure that the alley is sort of kept to our standards, so.
I just, I want, my concern is that any emergency access they need through that alley would be maintained.
Sure, yeah, the alley width is staying very similar to what it is today, so the emergency access would be maintained.
Perfect. And then I want to talk about the, the way the parking spaces go like this now, and you're going to make them flat and get rid of the stairs, I hear, on that side of. Will that sidewalk be ADA compliant? It's a pretty steep hill, even.
Yeah, I mean, ADA compliant is a pretty specific number, right? Our sidewalk is going to follow the grade of Luella. So I mean, that's really the best we can do, is the street, like Luella Avenue, that goes downhill. And our sidewalk is just going to be at the same downhill slope that Luella is. So there won't be any steps in it, it'll be much easier. But I'm not sure that the actual grade percentage, slope percentage meets ADA.
It won't meet a traditional ADA standard, but the actual standard for a sidewalk along a road is that we meet the profile of the road. So it's going to be over the 5% that you need for ADA. But it will be following the slope of the road.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? I have one quick one, I hope it's quick. On the aerial view, you show the green roof, which looks very, very small compared to the size of the roof. So why is there only just a small sliver of the roof is green?
So actually, we're not, this isn't an overall roof plan. This is the plan for essentially level two of the building, the level right above the retail. So what we're showing is that there's apartments kind of in blue. And this green roof area is actually part of the roof of the retail space below. And that's the portion that we're showing is green roof. Up above, really, it's very difficult with all the condensers and the different type of equipment that needs to go up on the high roof to achieve any substantial amount of green roof on the high roof. Well, 20, at least 24 condensers up there, right? Like, just for the apartments, and then whatever mechanical equipment's needed for the retail spaces and the garage below.
So is this like a true green roof? Like, environmentally friendly, helping the sustainability of the building green roof? Or is this a green patch for terrace views, or something like that?
I believe you're using in your calculations, I think it's a tray system with living green plants.
We did actually a very similar green roof down in Ardmore. It's at 47 Cricket. That has the same, you know, similar kind of U shape around a green roof. And they put, the roof drains from the upper roof actually drain onto that. And so there is some, you know, effectiveness to that roof.
And is there access? Can residents walk on it, or is it just?
Typically, no. It would be, you know, separate from where it is. And then there's the green roof itself. They might have a little, you know, patio space, you know, a little outdoor space. But then they don't have access to that green roof.
Understood. Okay, that's it for me. Commissioner Larkin?
Are all of these one-bedrooms about 800 square feet, I'm assuming?
Just under, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, is this a caucus? Is there?
It's just a caucus. Sorry, just procedurally, when we're in a caucus, it's a presentation of the board, allows us to ask some questions. But unless we're taking a vote on the issue, there is no public comment. But there is an, there's public comment available at the end, if you would like to make some reference to this caucus. But they'll be in front of us again, at which time there will be lots of public engagement. Okay, thank you very much. And we will move to item E, which is Resolution 2023-79. This is authorization of the payment of change orders number one through four to Marino Corporation of the North Wayne Field driveway, North Wayne Field parking lot, and the Cowan Park parking lot undercuts, and the Cowan Park parking lot fence for the North Wayne Field and Cowan Park parking lots Stormwater Management Best Management Practices Project, Contract B 23-003, in the total amount of $67,662.79 to be funded from the Stormwater Fund. May I hear a motion, please? And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Mr. Norrisini?
Thank you, Commissioner. So you may recall, we bid this as one pro, we bid this as one bid, but it's two specific projects, both benefiting, they are BMPs for the North Wayne area of the township. And so the one was the school district parking lot that we lease as part of the whole North Wayne Field. What we encountered there was considerable unsuitable soil, which we had to mitigate using, as is noted in there, stone and a geotextile. We encountered the same item over at Cowan Park. We actually found the vestiges of some building when we were there. I don't know what, Tammy knows what it is. She told us about it. So really, what this is all about was poor soil conditions that wouldn't support the vehicular traffic. So we had to do undercutting at a geotextile and stone. And it's for both projects, I mean, they're, and it's both out of the Stormwater Fund. And we are well within our contingency budget for the project.
Does anybody have any questions for this? Is there any public comment? I'll call the vote, all in favor say aye. Oops, pardon me. That was me, aye opposed. Thank you very much. Moving to item F, which is Resolution 2023-89, Authorization to award construction contract B 23-008 for the Hunt Road Bridge replacement to RoadCon Inc. to include contingency and construction inspection and administrative costs in the total amount of $468,668 to be funded from the Stormwater Fund. May I hear a motion? May I hear a motion?
So move.
And a second? Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Commissioner. So this is, this bridge was identified in a previous inspection in need of work. So it will be getting a new deck, a new wooden deck. It's a single lane bridge. It will have appropriate side safety measures. And it also involves some work in the stream. The old abutments need to be repointed and grouted. And there's actually some scour that occurred at the foundation. So this is a redo, a rehabilitation of an existing bridge, a very detailed rehabilitation. So the bridge is not being replaced, it's being rehabbed.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this project? Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Item G is Ordinance 2023-07, which is an adoption approving a three-year lease for Paysboa for a portion of the Radnor Township Municipal Building consisting of approximately 1,500 square feet. May I please have a motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
I know we, this is the second time in front of us for adoption. Mr. White, do you want to remind us who is Paysboa and what are we doing with the lease?
Sure. Paysboa is a, has been a tenant in this building for a number of years now. I want to say close to eight. This is the renewal of the, the lease agreement we have. They occupy the space up on the second floor at the end of the hallway. They are fantastic tenants and utilize space in this building, which generates roughly $45,000 to $47,000 a year over the life of this agreement for space that would otherwise be not used, or at least not used as efficiently. So would highly recommend or ask the board to consider passing this.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I just want to follow up to what your point was, or someone's point, I believe it was yours, Commissioner Maroni. So we don't need the space. We have plenty of space. We're not at a short for space. Was it you that brought that up, Commissioner Maroni? I mean, because it's a very, very, very valid point of where, you know.
Yes, that, that issue.
I'm giving you, I'm giving you props.
Issue has come up. I'm sure if we offered it up, there, there'd be a line of departments that would love it. But we're just not quite there yet. It's, it's always part of the evaluation process and in about two and a half years, we'll be reconsidering that.
Any other questions, comments? Is there public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed? And one abstention. Commissioner Riley? We are to the big show tonight, which is, item H is the presentation of the Township Manager's Recommended 2024 Budget. Mr. White, when you're ready.
Thank you. As you can see, we are going to use our new technology as soon as we get it going. It was working great before the meeting. I unplugged it, which I knew the moment I unplugged it, I shouldn't have done that. So Ian is kind enough to get us restarted here. Before I get going too much into the actual presentation and the numbers, I'd like to start. All right, thanks Ian. Like to start by recognizing and thanking Mr. Tate and Ms. Lacy for their help over the last month and a half. We have gone through these numbers, obviously, multiple times with lots of changes and lots of last minute hurry up and look at this and hurry up and look at that. And at every step of the way, they've, they've come through and provided the information that's needed to ultimately get us to where we're at tonight. So I want to thank you both very much. In the interest of time tonight, I will, you'll only be hearing from me. We have the departments, department heads here. In case there are specific questions, the goal of tonight's presentation is to provide the board with a look at the 2024 budget as it exists now. Provide a high-level summary of where the numbers have, have landed and what we're thinking for next year. As we've done for the last couple of years, we've given this presentation and then not asked the board for an immediate response tonight. It's, it's to put this out publicly and get the conversation started. We'll be available to commissioners going forward to answer specific questions and, and get into as much detail as you'd like. And then ultimately come back in November with legislation. So I, I think the screens are going to turn on here. There we go, all right.
Perfect timing.
All right, Ian, it is not transitioning with my, my tablet, so we're kind of, we're going to try again.
Bill, you may consider coming to the podium?
That will be Plan B, and we will do that momentarily should this not. That looks better. I can see the mouse moving now. There we go. Thanks Ian. All right. So what we're, we're going to step through tonight, and I, I am aware that there's a baseball game on at eight, so I will. Oh, it started already? Oh, 8:07.
Now he's giving you the seven extra minutes.
I got 30 minutes on the button here, so I'll try to keep it to a couple of minutes per slide for all 37 slides. We should be in good shape. What I'll step through tonight is, you know, what our goals are when we sit down and start coming up with the budget. A lot of that, you'll hear again, it's, it's a, it's a bit repetitive because our operation and our goals remain pretty consistent. We'll talk about how the budget's laid out, how the general fund numbers are looking. I'd like to take a moment and highlight our departments and the services that they're offering. And then we'll take a quick look at both the sanitary sewer and stormwater funds. As the board is aware, those are rates that are set annually in addition to millage rates. So we'll, we'll cover all three of those topics tonight. When we sit down and, and kind of refocus in on the budget goals, these are, are more than just things that we're looking at in August and September every year. They're, they're kind of what we're looking at on a daily basis. We aim to maintain the same level of services that our departments are offering the community now. In addition to the operations, there's always a capital component that goes along with that. So we are always trying to work to make sure that the, the fleet and the equipment that our departments need to do their jobs is replaced and maintained efficiently as possible. When it comes to the sanitary sewer fund, setting rates needed to maintain our operational needs, which there is a small three-person unit in the Public Works Department that oversees that. But primarily, the, the major expense in that fund is the, our contributions to the RHM for the downstream conveyance of the sewage. And as the board is aware, Carfac is working on developing a long-term model. It won't be ready as part of these conversations in our budget window, but it is something that we'll work on heading into 2024. Stormwater, again, continuing to execute on the projects that were discussed as part of the funding plan that the board reviewed and approved back in 2022. And then again, keeping an eye on financial sustainability, looking at the long term. As, as we talk about budgets, those are one-year commitments. But having an eye to what today's commitments mean multiple years down the road is always a good idea. So we've incorporated that into what we're working on. The work that has been done up to this point, like as I mentioned at the start, what we're presenting tonight is a, an accumulation of work that started back in July. Departments have met with finance on multiple occasions, stepping through operational and capital needs. There was a preliminary budget that was put together by finance and those departments back in September. And then where we're at today is we refine those preliminary numbers down to, and I should say, when we ask for the preliminary numbers, those are, we ask for it all. So those numbers are usually a lot higher, especially in the expense side. And then based on resources that we're able to, or that we feel comfortable predicting on the business taxes and all of our other revenues, coupled with the real estate tax millage, we narrow those down or funnel those down into numbers that ultimately get presented tonight as a recommendation from, from me. And that's where we're at tonight. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here. This is more for informational purposes. And folks can go into this in as much detail as they'd like outside of this meeting. But this is how we're organized in terms of our funds and our departments. The primary highlight here is that the general fund houses all of our operations. And it is the primary source of our organization in terms of the service delivery. Our special revenue funds, which are, are over on this side of this chart, each of those have a, a unique and special revenue source that is used solely for that purpose. The Shade Tree Fund is a great example. There's an ordinance on the books where fines are levied for violations of the Shade Tree Fund. And those can only be used for a very specific purpose, and that is planting trees. So that is a special revenue fund. We segregate those things out into their own funds so that the, the dollars are never commingled with general operating. So we have Shade Tree, we have our sanitary sewer, stormwater, liquid fuels, and a lot of special revenue funds for those dedicated purposes. How we lay out the budget, we have an executive summary for those that, that just need a quick overview of what the budget is. It's kind of what tonight's presentation is, is a high-level overview of all of our aggregate activity and some high-level discussion points. And then we provide in the budget document itself, a fund-by-fund, department-by-department breakdown of all of the revenues and expenses. And those are complemented with a narrative that gives, again, a very high-level summary of what those numbers mean in terms of service delivery or projects or anything that's pertinent to the, the financial activity. And then at the back end of the budget, we have some supplemental information, tables, charts, and some comparables as it relates to our real estate tax, the cost to live in Radnor as versus some of our neighbors, and those, that type of information. So let's take a look at the general fund for 2024. Some of the major assumptions, as the board and the, and the public are aware, earlier this summer, the board approved a new community support unit within our police department. That unit is, includes one civilian licensed clinical social worker position, which we have hired, as well as three full-time officers, officers that will be dedicated to that, the, the mental health component of that unit. And then there are also two officers that will be assigned to a, a high-density beat area. The quick summary on those, in case you're hearing it for the first time, the, the social, the mental health unit will be aimed at providing a very specific service for those very specific items that, real-time 911 coverage as well as follow-up and continual care to the extent that we're able to do that for those needing that assistance. And we're really excited about getting that going. A quick kind of segue in terms of timing, the office, the, the officers have been hired or assigned to the unit. The social worker has been hired. What we're doing now is the newly hired officers are going through their required field training program. That program takes several months to get those officers through. We're aiming for December for those officers to be, to have successfully completed that program and able to go out on the street as full-time regular Radnor officers, at which time we'll be able to reassign the mental health officers to that unit where they can dedicate their time to the work that, that we're excited about doing with that group. Between now and then, as I mentioned, the social worker is on staff. She is responding to calls. She has started follow-ups. So there is some, the early, early work being done with that unit. And we're, we're very, very excited about, you know, some, some early interactions that she's been able to have with folks that, that our police department has had for years. She's had some positive interactions with some of those residents already. And, and we're really excited about where that department, or where that unit is going to go. The next major expense assumption includes payroll for collective bargaining units. As, as the board is aware, the rate civilian contract expires at the end of this year. We are also engaged in conversations with our FOP, for the police, for an extension. All these numbers include assumed conclusions on where we might end up with those two contracts. And those will be approved, those contracts will be approved by the board or considered by the board separately from the budget. But I just, when you're looking at these numbers, please know that those assumptions are built into these. Expense on the capital side, we do have some capital replacement within the departments. We, we've scaled that down considerably for 2024 in light of the fact that we do have the new police unit, as well as some payroll assumptions. And trying again to balance, you know, the needs of the departments in service delivery as, as well as the costs associated with offering those. I, I did want to highlight that there's still no dedicated capital for our non-stormwater-related infrastructure projects. That's the, the infamous unfunded capital list, which includes a great deal of our existing assets and the replacement of those over time. So while we have those projects, we, we know what they are, there's still no dedicated funding at this time for those. And then finally, revenue, and I'll get into this in more detail, but we've, we've reevaluated and are being a little bit more aggressive with some of those assumptions. Again, trying to balance all the different revenue makeups and not relying so heavily on just real estate taxes. So there's a lot going on on this slide. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail. You know, the, the total revenue for the general fund is just shy of, of 40 million for 2024. There's a quick comparison table that highlights how we are forecasting the revenues for next year compared to where those revenues were at for this year. So this is, when I talk about being a little bit more aggressive in some of the other non-real estate tax areas, that's, you know, that's what we're doing with some of the business taxes, the license and permits. Anywhere you see a negative number here, that, on the revenue side, that actually indicates an increase in estimate. So we're spreading out the anticipated additional revenues through all of these different areas. When you take a look at the revenue makeup of the general fund, you can see that there's basically three pieces to that makeup. The real estate tax and the Act 511 or business taxes are, you know, roughly the same size and take up a little bit more than two-thirds of the total, with the last third being broken up between our license and permitting revenue, grants that we get either through applications or through regular contributions from the state, like our, the pension and fire relief funds, which we then pass on to the fire company, and those types of revenues. Oh, the last thing with this is just recognizing, you know, the, the variation that we get. We saw a great recovery in 2021 coming out of COVID. 2022 included some one-time revenue in both our Act 511 program with audits and discoveries, as well as the last payment from the federal government and the ARPA funds. So that's why you see a decrease going into 2023. We anticipate that we will meet or maybe even exceed our estimates for this year and then an increase for next year as well. And these estimates, as you're looking at them now, do not include any kind of adjustments to the millage, for the real estate taxes. This is all baseline at today's rates. A good segue into our millage, this slide provides a history on where the township's been over the last decade in millage decisions. Again, similarly, I'm, with some of the other stuff, I'm not going to go a great detail with the history. It's here for, for your consumption when you're ready. I do want to highlight that, you know, the township itself is one of three different pieces of the, the total real estate tax bill that property owners in Radnor pay. The township at today's rate of 2.2837 is the smallest of the three taxing districts, with the school district obviously being the, the largest of the three in the county. and the county being slightly above us. In the table, there's a line marking the reassessment point, so you can see that the millage for the township decreased by just about half, and that was based on the fact that our total assessment for the township doubled. When we take a look at our business taxes, we have four primary groups, the local services, mercantile, business privilege, and the realty transfer. Realty transfer is, just as the name would describe, there's a tax that is levied on every transfer of real estate within the township. The township itself gets some revenue. The school district also gets revenue from that. This is just the township's portion, and it's, as you can imagine, the most volatile. It depends 100% on the sale of property, not something that we have a great deal of control over, other than to point out that it is a very healthy revenue amount for the township. And we're estimating next year at about $3.5 million. Business privilege is the largest of this group. And as you could see, since 2020, when COVID, coming out of COVID, that it, first of all, rebounded very nicely and has continued to grow. For 2024, you know, we have, we're estimating that continued growth. And keeping in mind, 2022 included several hundreds of thousands of dollars in one-time audit revenue, which is why you see that one-time line going out there. Mercantile is the retail activity within the township, again, performing at a similar rate as the business privilege, and we're, for 2024 forecasting that it'll continue to do so. And then the local services tax is a flat rate paid by each person working in Radnor. It's $52 for the year. This is a good indicator of, you know, the workforce within our township, and it has been very, very consistent. This is year-to-date. We still have another quarter of revenue to generate there, so we think that, at the end of this year, this will be a very consistent and steady revenue stream for the township at about a million. Switching over to the expenses, this makeup is the same as in past years. We are a service industry, and our primary expense are the folks that are out there providing those services. Wages and payroll make up about 65%, or wages and payroll liabilities and benefits make up about 65% of our operating budget. The other larger areas include our contracted services, which is a pretty wide plethora of different costs that we're obligated to make through, you know, liability insurance, our legal costs, Act 511 program, facility maintenance and repair, our recycling and refuse disposal, as well as the different contracts that our departments have. For example, community development with the outsourced assistance we get for permitting and the inspection. So that's all encompassed in the contracted services. And then the transfers are pretty much two transactions. We cover our departmental capital, as well as the significant share of our annual debt obligations. Also included in the general fund, we have our community organizations that we fund. For 2024, the library has requested a $42,000 increase in the contributions there. That is included in these numbers. Additionally, the Radnor Fire Company has, 2024, if you'll recall, is that first year when the grant proceeds that they, they were awarded years ago for the hiring of staff was scheduled to run out. So the increase of 153,000 was something that we've, we've known was coming for a few years. So 2024 is the first year of that, and that is included in these numbers as well. All of the other organizations are at their, the same levels in 2024 as they were in '23. And total expenses for the general fund, similar to the revenue, they, they have trended right on top of one another, and that's, that's not an accident. We are shooting for break even every year. You know, some of the revenues obviously are a little bit more volatile, so some years we do better than others. For 2023, we anticipate, you know, our year-to-date will be up at about, or slightly below, our 2023 budget. 2024, there's an increase primarily due to the new community support unit in police, as well as the payroll associated with the collective bargaining agreements. Outside of that, most of the other expenses are relatively consistent, and you can see that when you get into the numbers, when you compare year over year. I usually include, or I include this graph annually. There's a lot going on here. What this is, is a four-year history, department-by-department, within the general fund. To quickly see a couple of things, first of all, order of magnitude and spending, as well as any meaningful changes year over year within those departments. As you could see, the two biggest departments, which makes sense, are police and Public Works. You see in police, there's an increase in 2024. Again, that's the, you know, we hired six new full-time people in that department, as well as the payroll and related costs associated with the FOP agreement. Public Works, with the size of the department, the increase there is, again, going back to payroll. Outside of that, when you take a look at all other departments, while the service, a lot of services are offered, the expenses aren't quite the same because they just don't have the same number of staff. But you could see relative consistency for all of the departments over time. This is the general fund operating statement that shows 2020 through what we're forecasting for 2024. This is where I was talking about a moment ago, where you can kind of go category by category and look for the trends. And then we have included a comparison of 2024 Township Manager estimates in this green-shaded column versus where the 2023 revised budget is, so you can see the differences. Again, on the revenue side, negatives actually are showing increased revenues. And on the expense side, positive numbers are increased expenses. Obviously, the biggest one is in the wages and compensation for those two items that I've highlighted. But on the aggregate, the revenues, the revenue increases are, for all intents and purposes, breaking even with the anticipated increases on the expense side. In the end, you see that the general fund has a deficit or a negative operating bottom line of about 257,000. That, that can be made up with a millage increase of about, or not about, a millage increase of .0500 mils, which represents about a 2.1 increase over where we're at in 2023. If you recall, in past years, we had some expenditure modifications that we would, we recommended. A couple of years ago, it was the comp plan, which we're going through now. Last year, we had talked about some increased capital, as well as a facilities bond. The facilities bond, or the costs associated with that are now in the, in the normal set of numbers that we just showed. So there's, there's really no expense items to highlight outside of our normal operations. So the, the bottom line with the, with this tax adjustment, excuse me, puts us at roughly 65,000 above zero. And then we also are maintaining a healthy cash balance in addition to that, which is, again, not something that's accidental, that's intentional, because we've seen two or three times over the last 15 to 18 years, where at any point in time, we can see a multiple million-dollar revenue reduction based on larger economic conditions. These cash reserves are, would allow the township to continue operating in those circumstances where revenues take a sudden, sudden dive on us. A quick, some highlights with the tax adjustment that's being proposed. And this is a repeat bullet from prior years. The township's current millage rate at 2.3, it doesn't take a lot of change to that number for the percentage to inflate quickly. So the percentage itself is not always the best indicator, especially for revenue generation. In this case, at 2.1%, it's generating about 322,000 for the township. Based on the taxable assessment of the township, which is 6.4 billion, it generates the 322,000. Our residential makeup is, the average household is at 671,000. The median is about 549. And the costs associated, or the cost with that tax increase for the average and median homeowners are shown here, at about $33 or $27, broken down by month. And then this is just a quick double check of the math to make sure that the revenue generation is matching up with the two different ways of calculating it. So when we, we get lost sometimes in these discussions about the taxes and the increases. I wanted to take a moment as part of this presentation and just talk about what it is that the township offers with all of these different revenue sources. For the police department, you know, we have the community support unit. We have the mental health service, the high-density coverage. And if you recall, in addition to, you know, providing immediate follow-up care for the very specific need of those needing mental help, mental health help, the other element of that with the high-density beet was providing immediate coverage or increased coverage to the areas where the higher crime is occurring, which allows our officers to stay spread out in the community more consistently. That's built into this budget that I'm presenting tonight. The board, late in 2022, authorized the township to move forward with a license plate reader contract. That has been installed. We've also incorporated drone technology, which has been helpful in identifying lost subjects. It's also been helpful in identifying some traffic situations that, you know, spur up unexpectedly. We're able to get eyes in the sky to help us identify, you know, where the congestion points are, or what's going on. And I can also say, without divulging too much police information, that the license plate reader has already helped the police department have an arrest regarding an assault that took place, because the, we were able to get a description of the vehicle, and the license plate reader technology identified that vehicle, which then led the police to the owner of that vehicle in an arrest. So there's an immediate, immediate success with the use of that technology, and it's offering, it's allowing our police department to offer better service. At the same time, protecting our schools is something that the police department takes very seriously. They partner with all the schools in the township. We have 13 within our borders, both public and private, undergrad and college level. That includes threat and security assessments, as well as daily school visits and regular communication. Our Public Works Department, these are the folks that we're seeing every single day with our trash recycling, yard waste. Those crews are visiting all of our households three times a week to collect those items. We're getting into the leaf collection season, so from now through mid-December, we're going to come visit every household twice to collect those leaves. Our field maintenance, throughout the year, the park maintenance division is mowing and maintaining those fields, benefiting all of our youth organizations and teams. And then when it does snow, Radnor is known for our quick and comprehensive response to those storms, clearing the roads, the public parking areas, as well as certain township-owned sidewalks and some, and walking trails. All of these items are built into the, the amount we're paying as taxpayers. So the, those high-level revenue numbers that I presented on earlier, these services are included in those. There's no additional cost. We get these for living here. Our Parks and Recreation Department, of four people, providing development and implementation of over 200 annual recreational programs, participation of 20,000-plus folks coming to enjoy those events. During day camp, 45 part-time seasonal staff members, what this program, what this department is able to produce in terms of programming is always very, very impressive. And while there's some additional cost for some of those programs, the management of those things, we are offering as a township through the tax and the revenues that we're generating. Tammy and her team also coordinate with over 250 community-based partnerships and businesses to advocate for their services within the township as well. And then, significant time management is offering the facility management for all the operation scheduling capital with regard to both our physical buildings at the Public Works, or at the rack, as well as our, the skate park, and all of our fields, and the users of those fields. Engineering and Community Development, rivaling most major cities, our engineering department delivers, delivers on major projects at a, an amazing level. We've identified some of the highlights here. We have the Lancaster sidewalk project this year. The North Wayne sidewalk project was done this year. The adaptive traffic system has been incrementally done over the last couple of years. Completed the South Wayne stormwater management system, the North Wayne Field, the Cowan parking lot, as well as the North Wayne area tree trench. We've replaced the culvert at Malin, as well as some smaller infrastructure jobs that Ben has engineered and we've installed. Again, those, those are all 2020, you know, started in late 2022, completed in 2023, and that's basically Steve, Ben, and the consultants that help us with the design of those. In addition to the, the external projects, they're also producing in-house assistance with any of our departments needing help with the Public Works garage, township building rack, Krutzberg Center parking lots, and any of the other areas that, that require some engineering eyes and expertise. They're also the front line of the land development services for any of those projects coming in. Steve and his team, coupled with the Community Development Department, are meeting with those folks to provide, you know, land development, stormwater, zoning, permitting, all of those types of services for those projects coming in. And then last on this list, but certainly not least, is our code and permitting services, assuring that all the vertical development is done properly with our small, but again, mighty, code staff that are out there issuing the permits and inspecting all of those jobs on a regular basis. And that includes property maintenance, which is a part-time person that has a new work list every week. Finance, financial safeguarding, making sure, critically making sure that the integrity of the financial reporting process is done. The segregation of duties and internal control, something that we take very, very seriously. I think we also, as municipalities go, our financial reporting and budgeting is top-notch, thanks to their expertise. Finance provides revenue and collection services to our, not just our staff, but also our residents and our businesses. And then they also, their IT, HR, sustainability, grant, right-to-know is all done within the finance department as well, servicing mostly in-house, but also, you know, the residents as well. So again, I just wanted to highlight, and I appreciate you letting me go through that, the amazing amount of services and work that our staff does on a daily basis. We talk about it a lot during budget seasons, because it's front of mind and it's pertinent, because we're looking at the numbers. But I, we didn't want it just to be numbers, because it's the folks out there doing a great job, and, and they do a great job. Sanitary sewer, it's a tough transition going to sanitary sewer from such an excellent group of staff. It is an area that, that we are responsible. We own and maintain our system here within town. We charge a sewer rent that generates the revenue necessary to pay primarily our share of the RHM contract, which is, is basically just sending the sewage downstream. As we've talked about in, in great detail over the last couple of years, those RHM costs continue to escalate based on EPA and cost demands being put on the downstream management of the sewage. It's, those costs, as you can imagine, work their way back upstream, and we're at the top of that. So we've, we've increased our fees over the last couple of years to try to keep pace with those RHM costs. In spite of those increases, we've still needed the general fund in 2022 and '23 to transfer 1.5 and 1.7 million respectively, just to maintain a cash balance in that fund to meet our expenses. So 2024, the break-even calculation based on the estimate of water consumption for next year is a rate at 1262. next year is a rate at 1262. I do want to qualify that tonight by saying that this, I mean, we're, this is an ongoing evaluation. It's October, we still have one more payment left this year to RHM, as well as we'll get a little bit better handle on what our estimated water usage is, as well as our end-of-year actuals, to see what that number is. The 1262 goal would be to break even within the fund without requiring general fund transfers. So, these are the two transfers in from the general fund that I noted, needed on the revenue side in order to try to meet expenses. So, if you jump to the bottom line, you could see in '20 and '21, we had significant deficits within the fund. The fee increases coupled by the general fund transfers have helped that fund get closer to break even, but we're still operating a couple hundred thousand dollars of deficit. For 2024, based on the estimates that we've used so far, with the fee increase proposed, we've had about 172 positive. And that increase is large because we're trying to overcome the RHM expense, which you could see here going from 4.6 million in 2021 up to what they've told us is at 6.5 million next year. So, our rates are having to keep up with those cost increases. And you could see when you take a look at this operating statement, the non-RHM costs have remained relatively consistent over the life of, for 2020 up to 2024, that really it is the RHM that's driving the need to constantly reevaluate these rates. That is partially the reason why the board asked CarFAC to take a dive into this. They are working on that now, and we expect something, and again, not within our timetable for the budget, but early in 2024. And then finally, the stormwater fund. No fee increase or change for 2024, as that's what was part of the funding plan that was looked at and approved back in 2022. We continue to complete projects. There's a ton of success here in terms of the investment back into the community, both now, we can say, in terms of some flood mitigation projects, as well as trying to keep up with our aging infrastructure. Some of those projects, the costs have been greater, so I just, it is something that we're going to revisit early in 2024. It will not affect our 2024 budget, but we want to revisit that funding plan in early 2024 and just kind of recalibrate where we're at and where we want to be, both in terms of the increased costs, as well as there's been a handful of additional projects added to the list. So, we just want to make sure that we're prioritizing and getting ourselves prepared for how we're going to fund those going forward. From a transactional standpoint, we did the initial borrow in 2022 of 10 million, and we anticipate drawing down the second tranche of that borrowing, which was part of that funding plan we talked about in 2022. We'll need that in 2024. Again, that's not going to affect the rate, that was what we planned for, but it'll be necessary, sorry, go away. It'll be necessary to bridge that gap that you see in the lower right-hand corner of about 7.6 million deficit. And that deficit exists entirely because of the projects we're completing. A quick look at our budget calendar going forward. We're making this presentation tonight. We'll have on next Monday's agenda, the adoption of the preliminary budget to meet the charter requirement. It is the township manager's version. It sets a baseline and nothing else. It's a transactional approval. Obviously, we'll have time in November to make any adjustments to what the board would like to see included next year at the 13th of November, where that, the legislation is introduced, advertised then for an adoption at the 27th. And then we have the December 11th meeting, if needed, for any final items that are either still being discussed or not ready for adoption at the 27th of November. So, that's the budget presentation for next year. Again, while we focus a lot on the numbers, I think, in general, the township is fortunate to have such a strong business tax base that we rely on to help offset the real estate tax burden. I think the township also does a good job of, where we can, charging fees that offset specific services, that makes up another third of that revenue pie, so we have a pretty diverse revenue makeup. All of that helps offset the burden of the real estate tax, which I know gets most of the focus at the end of the day when we have these discussions. But that's where we're at for 2024. And like I said, we're open to answer any specific questions going forward. You can reach out. We'll set up a time to go through and go into as much detail as commissioners need. So, I appreciate the time and would like to close by thanking each of the department heads for the work that they do. They are very, very much working department heads. They're the ones out there actually in the thick of it, providing the services and making sure that the work gets done. So, to the group that's here tonight, thank you very much, and thank you, Board, for giving me the time to do this.
Thank you very much. And I echo, as I know, that all of my colleagues up here, I echo your sentiment about how fantastic our staff is, from department head all the way through each member of your departments. Thank you for your service and dedication to our community. That comes across loud and clear every day. I encourage my, I know I'm going to take the time to sit with Bill and Bob and others to really understand the detail of the numbers. I encourage each commissioner to make the time to do that. Bill, I know you put up the schedule, but the next time we have this with us is...
You'll see the preliminary budget on the next agenda. Again, that's more checking a box than it is actual deliberation, but it is an opportunity to ask questions publicly if the board wants to do that. And then after that, November 13th, for the initial introduction of the budget legislation itself.
Excellent. Without going into, full diving into the numbers, are there some general concerns, comments, questions from commissioners before we close it out? I know everybody wants to get out of here, so thank you for that. And I will move quickly to reports of board liaisons. Is there any reports that...
Just going to talk real quick. And so, I just want to thank again Tammy, you do a wonderful job. I know that there was, geez, we have Santa's Delivery coming up soon. We've got a lot of great events, the pumpkin festival. A little disappointed we didn't get our pumpkin, but that just shows how successful everything is. And the Willows was great. I know that there was, Commissioner Maroney, you went to the Willows play there, and that's, was great. And then briefly, I don't want to talk too much about it. There was a talk at the board meeting about the dogs, and I do want to thank Mary Coe. I think she led a great meeting. There are a lot of people that were concerned, and I think that she did a great job, and always happy to listen to people and talk to people about that. So, other than that, thank you.
Others?
Commissioner Jones?
Not just because Joyce is here, but I do want to announce that on Saturday, December 2nd at 8:00 a.m., I don't know what annual it is, is it the 7th? 10th Annual Elves for the Shelves Run to Benefit Radnor Memorial Library will be taking place. And it's suggested to sign up either as a family or a company team, and you can also, if interested, sign up as a sponsor. And you can contact the head of, director of development, Kristy Durnland, for those sponsorship opportunities.
Can I add one thing to that, too? Is the memorial library, the Friends of the Memorial Library used book sale is this coming weekend, so look forward to seeing everybody there. Afterwards, we will.
I will just mention the Environmental Advisory Council has been meeting and is coming up with a plan for having some speakers and some educational opportunities for people in the township to learn more about ways that they can be more environmentally friendly. I think one that is upcoming is about composting, and keep your eye out for the date. I'm trying to find it, and I'm not seeing it, but, and they are also offering, they are also offering these great flags. If you have a natural growth garden and you want to show it off, there are, there's an opportunity to receive one of these designations from the Environmental Advisory Council to acknowledge the good that natural growth yards can do. So, those are a couple of the interesting things going on with the EAC, but that's it for me. Anyone else have a report? Okay, I will move on to new business. Is there any new business? Yeah, I'm going to kick this over to Commissioner Jones.
I have a statement to read, just don't want to ignore what's going on right now in the world, and as you all know, well, many of you might know, that on July 17th, we introduced, the Radnor Township Board introduced a proclamation against hate. So, I have a statement to read. So, in accordance with Radnor Township's anti-hate proclamation issued on July 17th, 2023, it's important to reiterate that Radnor Township condemns all forms of hateful behavior against all human lives. Furthermore, I invite my fellow commissioners to stand in allyship with me in support of our Jewish friends and community affected by the horrific October 7th Hamas attacks in Israel, and believe that terrorism is never a justified form of resistance. I believe there isn't a citizen, child, or family on the planet that should ever have to endure this level of fear and violence. My heart and thoughts are with the hostages, the deceased, and those mourning and traumatized by all the innocent lives lost. My heart and thoughts are also with the citizens of Israel and Palestine as this conflict continues, and I hold out hope for peace and safety to one day become the reality of this region. This conflict in Israel and Gaza is indicative of a worldwide issue that touches upon us locally. Therefore, this is a reminder to everyone listening that Radnor Township does not support any form of antisemitism, defamation, or hateful behavior.
Thank you for that. Is there other new business? Is there old business? Is there any final public participation? Would anybody like to make a comment? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, and a second. All in favor, say aye. Good night, everyone. Go Phil's.